The September twelfth, twenty twenty four, uh, regular meeting of the Manchester Shortsville Central School District for vindication. Glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of God. Alright. Thanks, everybody. First meeting back after the school year started, I don't know about you, but a lot of great things going on, and then we'll hear quite a bit about it from superintendent. Got a lot to cover today, and so we'll just start with the minutes for the August twenty second, twenty twenty four board meeting. Oh, actually, I should say, I don't know why I'm getting it all out, but do we, do we have any public comment? Do anyone notice? Oh, Tim, this is the minutes for, sorry, I'm still, by the way, so we've transitioned to a new system, so I'm trying really hard to not revert back to the paper, and I like it, but I think we're all adjusting very degrees, so, um, yes.
Yeah, the approval of minutes is gonna be doing before public comments.
The minutes of the current meeting.
Of the previous meeting.
Okay. Very good. Adapting, we're adapting, okay, very good, so we're gonna go ahead and review the, um, the minutes for the August twenty second regular meeting. So, um. Upon the re- the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent Schools in pursuant to education law approves the August twenty second, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. We got a motion from Chelsea and a second from Matt, please. Any questions? Alright, all in favor, aye, and opposed, no, motion carries, thank you. Okay, um, at this point, I would have checked on public comment, at which we have none, and now what I need to do is go ahead and I'm gonna go ahead and move us into audit committee. So at this point, we'll move as board into the audit committee function. At six oh two, and. We're gonna have a presentation from our company manager. Anyone that's there, are you up there, here, or where would you like me?
If you wanna use the podium, it doesn't matter, so, um, thank you for inviting me here.
Is this okay?
Yep, I'm good.
As long, if anyone can't hear, just, just raise your hand or something and we'll adjust.
Yeah, I, I can project that, you can raise that a little bit, um, if you'd like, but, uh, yeah, um, so you should have received, again, um, my supervisor, the department for the firm of audits, the school district, um, here to present the June thirtieth, twenty twenty, um, for audit of the basic financial statements. And you should have received in your board packets, um, um, the basic financial statements, in addition, and internal control communication. Um, and what I handed out was an executive summary, so that's, uh, the document that really summarizes the basic financial statements. Um, and again, you also received the final copy copies, um, so, you know, again, those are identical to what was received in the, uh, uh, board packets, okay? Again, um, you know, there's a lot of good information in the basic financial statements, I think, you know, the first thing you wanna know is, you know, how did you do, right? And we issued an unqualified opinion, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so that's really where you wanna be, that's the standard opinion that you're looking for when, uh, you're getting an audit complete. So, that's very positive, uh, there's some other information in that sixty-page document, management discussion and analysis, that's really a nice summary of what took place during the year. Um, there's some year-over-year variance discussions, there's some budget variance discussions, actually factors that will impact the school district going forward, so. You know, if you get a chance to read that, the idea is that gives you a nice summary of what took place, the executive summary tries to pull some of that information out. Um, and again, I'll try and keep it brief, I mean, we had a lot of stuff going on, plus I'm with the Bill Stearns, so it's a little confusing, so, you know, we'll be brief, uh. And again, if you take a look at that first page, um, of the executive summary, page one, that's just a snapshot, we're really focused on the general fund, as you know, that's the major operating fund of the school district, that's where the voters are voting on the budget. Um, and again, this is really a two-year comparison, just to give you an idea of what happened, where you had last year compared to where you had this year. And again, you have the assets on the top half of the page, you've got liabilities which you owe, on the middle half of the page, and on the bottom half of the page, you have some, your fund balances or your equities, okay, what you own, okay? And just a couple of quick bullet points, you can see the total assets, twelve million dollars, kind of, that's your cash, okay, cash and cash equivalents, you've got some receivables there, some different state and federally receivables. Those have all been collected at this point in time, um, or the majority of them have been collected at this point in time, um, so really nothing too unusual there. On the middle half of the page, you've got your liabilities which you owe, really the biggest item there is to be aware of, is that due to retirement system, again, that's the obligation to the teacher's retirement system, as well as a small obligation to employee retirement system, you can see that's up a little bit, so although the teacher's retirement system rates went down, the employee retirement system rates went up more than offset what went down. And you know, the teacher's retirement system for next year, it will be higher, so we'll can expect to see that number being a little bit higher next year, but. Again, those are the dollars that you set aside during the year, and they get paid to the retirement system in the fall, okay, so that's just that obligation at the end of the year. But really important part is the bottom half of the page, you've got your fund balances and your reserves, and you can see overall, uh, you had a little over ten point three million dollars in fund balances and reserves. You know, you've got some, some non-spendable dollars, so things that, that, um, you know, primarily those are prepaid type items, so you pay these, um, the cash out the door, you can't spend it again, so it's considered non-spendable. You've got your different reserve funds, and we'll look at those in detail on the next page, but again, there's generally this law that talks about how those dollars can be set aside, and then how you can spend those dollars. You've got some signed fund balances and your encumbrances, and then an undesignated fund balance, a hundred thousand, and which, that's your unassigned fund balance, or that's, the fund balance referred to the four percent, right? It's restricted by section thirteen eighteen, a real copy of the tax law, so you're right at that four percent, that's really where you wanna be at the end of the year, okay? But overall, you can see your equities did go up from last year about one point eight million dollars, and we'll talk about what happened during the year, uh, in terms of your revenues and expenditures, and certainly, um, you know, on the revenue side of the budget, we'll see a few things that, that I'll highlight, okay, so that's that snapshot, and again, overall, your equities went up about one point eight million dollars, and we'll see that again in a minute, alright? So, the next page is just a quick summary of the reserves, just a little more detail, um, give me questions on that first page, just before I highlight a couple of these items here. Okay, so the, the general fund equities or, or reserve accounts, again, there's different types of reserves, you've got the reserves that are primarily for operating type purposes, so the ERS reserve, the TRS reserve. So those are reserves that you set aside to help offset any specific, any significant spikes in the retirement system. Um, you've got support discount and employment insurance dollars set aside there too, again, for those self-funded programs that you participate in. Um, employee benefit approved liability reserve, that's there for vested benefits, so if you pay out someone sick day or vacation upon retirement, you've got some dollars set aside there. Uh, repair reserve, really for non-miable type repairs is really what that would be used for. Then your capital reserves, again, very, very beneficial reserves, as you know, you folks have really utilized the reserves over the past few years. You've done a nice job in your long-term planning relating to capital projects, and really the idea is if you can set dollars aside in those different capital reserves, that you really kind of offset the local portion of the product, right, which is really beneficial, it relieves, reduces the impact of the taxpayer when it comes to voting on the product. So again, very beneficial to have, we have a bus purchase reserve, and you also have, uh, a couple of capital reserves there, again, very beneficial, and you can see that you utilize that bus purchase reserve during the year, as you know, the voters approve to allocate some of the dollars out of that reserve to support the purchase of the buses, okay, so again, that's something to see there. Then you've got some insurance liability reserve down at the bottom half of the page, again, they're for very specific type items, uh, relating to insurance and liability, so the comfortable is any of our unanticipated claims. So again, and you've got those reserves, not only you have them, you can see for twenty four, twenty five, you're supporting next year's budget with about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in reserves, okay? So you've got your expense budget, you've got your revenues, and you've got a little bit of a gap, and you're filling that gap with the reserve funds, okay? So you're supporting next year's budget, what that means is you're not levying a tax, okay, for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, okay? So again, that's a quick discussion of the reserves, um, any questions on those right now before we kinda talk about the revenue expense? Alright, so, so again, just continuing on to talk about where some of those dollars came from that you were able to allocate into the reserves, because again, you were able to allocate some of the dollars into the reserves. Um, you can see on the general fund side, you know, the revenues, you can see on a budget of two hundred and, or twenty-two point three million, you collect about twenty-two point four, alright? And again, a couple of the key areas there on the revenue side, you can see charges for services, you, you ended up collecting more in that area than you anticipated. Primarily that relates to some of the in-house special education programs or special programs, you had a couple of students that were in the district that you had to charge other school districts for. And again, an area that is very tough to anticipate when you have those students coming into the district, the expenses go up for the cost of those students, but then you can bill, uh, the district for the support of those students. That was, uh, one of the bigger items, and then you have health services for other students, again, that you're building out, again, very difficult to, to project. Um, you're using money in property, you see two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, more than what we anticipated, and interest rates have been very well right now, um, we don't know how long that will continue, okay? Um, but you've done a nice job, we have a nice investment program that you're utilizing, so again, you've generated some very positive returns there, you sold some, some equipment during the year, uh, so that generated some dollars. And then the, the, the state aid, again, you did have some increases in the foundation aid and the building aid, you know, again, that's an area that you have to continue to monitor. As you know, that could be a challenge going forward, you know, as you know, when the executive budget initially came out, the twenty-four, twenty-five, right? Um, there was some concern when it comes to how they were going to deal with the whole harness and how that will impact a lot of the different rural school districts, and I know that was a, a big challenge. And that really is one of the reasons why you have those reserves, right, to help plan when you do see those challenges on the revenue side of the budget. And again, you can see it, it, it did generate some additional aid this year, uh, in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and certainly going forward, there is some uncertainty there as far as how that new formula may end up, okay? So again, you did end the year in a very good financial position, and this is primarily where some of those dollars came from, was on the revenue side of the budget that we allocated into the reserves, okay? So that's the revenue, uh, the expenditure side of the budget, do you have any question on revenue, please? Okay, and this is just a, a, a nice little look at your, your expenditures, and again, I mentioned you had some unique items that took place during this year on kind of the expense side of the budget. Um, and again, on a twenty-two point eight million dollar budget, you s- spent about twenty-two point four, so you spent about ninety-eight percent of your budget, okay? Um, so again, you generated a positive budget variance of about four hundred thousand. You have to also remember, um, you know, that you're, you, you do have some ARC dollars out there, so during the year, you spent about one point two million dollars in the federal stimulus monies, right? And again, that's an area that districts have to monitor, um, you folks, you know, of that one point two million, there are some salaries that will need to come back to the general fund, maybe by around two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand, right? So they'll, right now, those ARC monies are spent in a separate fund, that's where the expenses are, some of those dollars will come back for those folks that you're going to retain, okay? So again, just to keep that in mind, um, but again, overall, the end of the year, a little over a four hundred thousand dollar surplus on the expense side of the budget. Again, that, that, that little reconciliation in the middle is just kinda how those budgetary surpluses come back to that overall increase in the fund balance, right? And again, you folks aren't appropriating reserves or fund balance, you didn't appropriate reserves and fund balance for twenty-three, twenty-four, okay, you are for twenty-four, twenty-five. But again, in order to break even, you have to generate budgetary surpluses equal to what you're appropriating fund balance and reserves, and you can't, you increase the budget by one point eight million dollars, or you increase your fund balance by one point eight, and it's because of the revenue budgetary surplus, that small expense budgetary surplus, you pull out what you transferred to the reserves, or what you transferred to the capital fund for the bus purchases, and that's where you come back to that increase in fund balance, okay, so just to be aware of that. Really what that means is the more dollars you appropriate in fund balance and reserves, the, the, the larger surpluses you have to have just to break even, okay? You folks are at minimum right now, so a lot of those budgetary surpluses already go to those reserves based on the current information, okay? So again, someplace to monitor, and again, uh, those reserves will be really looked at in the future if you see any challenges when it relates to, um, anxiety and uncertainty, okay? Any questions so far? So that's the general, that's the, the major operating fund, I'll go much quicker, I promise now, um, uh, just a couple of other funds that are, are part of the district's school lunch program, as you know, uh, nothing too unusual there. Um, and a hundred and fourteen thousand in that program at the end of the year, um, you have miscellaneous reserves, you do have scholarships, some scholarship programs out there, at about, uh, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. About six hundred and thirty thousand relates to the different scholarship programs you have, so you do have a nice, um, scholarship program out there. The debt service fund, and that just relates to, um, unspent capital projects, closed capital projects, old debt, capital project coming into this reserve, they're restricted to pay-down debt, okay? So you'll transfer those dollars into the general fund, and you see you moved about fifty thousand dollars over there during the year, okay? You have a plan to continue to budget those dollars back to the general fund. The special aid fund, again, that's where those federal stimulus monies are spent, so you see, you had about one point eight million dollars worth of expenditures, okay? About one point two relate to the stimulus funds, so as the stimulus funds go away, right, you're gonna see a big drop-off in the special aid fund, okay? You'll still have some different federal grants and state grants, but primarily, you had about one point two million dollars last year that you spent on, um, different programs that were in this upside of the general fund, okay? So again, that'll all away, uh, I think at the end, right, the end of September is, is the, um, the, when you hit the end of the year, and they've all gotta be spent by the end of the year unless you got some essentials, okay? And then the capital project, again, you've had a very robust capital project over the past few years, and again, you see that negative number, it's just a, a function of how you finance your projects. You finance your project with short-term financing, so bond anticipation notes, and then once you issue the sever bonds, that, that negative number goes away, so really nothing unusual when it comes to how schools finance their capital projects, okay? So then this is a sixty-page document, kind of to, to highlight some of the key items, okay? Um, any kind of questions on that? For just touch base on the last page, so this last page is a, is a document that, uh, part of the financial statements, and, and this kinda makes the school district look more like a corporation, okay? It's not really useful because you really aren't a corporation, but we consolidate all of those operating accounts, we include all of the capital assets that you have, all of the long-term obligations, the long-term debt, the retiree health obligations you have, uh, and then you have a net position, right? And so that total net position says you have about thirty-nine million dollars, right? Well, about thirty million of that is your capital assets, right? Can you really sell your assets for thirty million dollars? Probably not, right? Uh, but that's a big piece of, so this statement, you have to be careful when you look at it, because it's not how you operate, this is just for financial reporting purposes, but it does tell a story. You see that unrestricted number there, that negative eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, okay? So you have a deficit unrestricted net position, right? And that's because of that very bottom number, that retiree health obligation, so your contracts, based on your contracts, you provide certain benefits to retirees, okay? They have an actuarial committee that calculated, they said that's about two point nine million dollars, alright? But New York State says you have to report this liability, you can't fund it, right? So now you got a liability, you can't fund it, that's why you see that negative number, okay? I think the key though, with, especially for this district, is that number, you know, being a positive thirty-nine million dollars, that's very, very daunting. What that tells me is that the school district has managed your retiree health program very well over the years. We have clients where they have a net position that is negative three or four times their budget, okay? So you're really in a very nice position, you've really controlled those costs, you've done a nice job there, so, so just to keep that in mind, when you look at this part of the financial statements, that's really the story that this tells, is that you've managed that benefit very well, because you have really a small obligation compared to your overall budget, okay, so you're, you're positive, alright? Any questions yet?
So on the land, that is the land, the acreage only, not the building, correct?
Well, you gotta remember, yep, that's the historical cost of the land when you, when you took ownership of it, okay?
Value, not the, uh, not the value as of today, but the value as of nineteen sixty.
Wherever you got, yeah, and then the, the, the other capital assets and that, that's got your buildings and your other improvements in there, your equipment. If you look in the audit report, about halfway through the audit report, there's actually a page that summarizes the components of that, okay? The land, the building, the fixed assets, in fact, it's, um, probably right around page, uh, thirty-six of the financial statements, if you want to see the components of that.
So if there's, if there's an error in that section, does it impact anything whatsoever?
I don't know what you mean by that.
If, if it was undervalued.
Okay.
If the building, if the building's undervalued than what it's shown.
Yeah, so, so we don't report your, the values on your financial statements at market value, they're reporting that historical cost, okay? So what, what the asset was, was purchased at, not of depreciation. So that number you see in the financial statement, that thirty-six million, nine seventy-one, other capital assets, that's your buildings, your, your, your equipment and stuff, not of depreciation.
So that explains why a neighboring school district has a value of a hundred million dollars, and we've got a value of sixteen million for reference.
Well, yeah, yeah, it depends on what they've, what they've, um, done over the last few years, certainly some of your capital projects that you've completed, right? You, you've increased your building, if you will, but you haven't fully depreciated it yet, right? So that's the, the key, okay? And again, depending on the dollar amount of the capital project too, and what you're doing, so certainly, there's a big piece of that.
Do you depreciate over seven years?
Um, it depends, so, so, so I think, uh, you know, your equipment, machine equipment type items are usually five to, to ten years, depending on the asset. Buildings and so forth, they're usually forty to fifty years, so it's, 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 it's talked about in the audit report, okay? Okay, any questions on that? The other document you have is the internal control communication, again, I mentioned there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Part of the process we go through is we have to sit down and we have to document all the different internal controls, checks and balances that you have over the different financial cycles, go do a lot of different interviews and, and really document, you know, what is the process that you go through for someone to, you know, complete a timesheet, submit it to payroll, it gets processed through payroll, or paid out? Again, it includes no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, few minor procedural items in there, uh, that we talk about, and I used to piggyback the, um, again, that's just an area to, to, to make sure you're documenting when you do piggyback onto the contract, that you documented the different criteria that OSC requires, which is, you know, that it's left by another government, that it's been public, and so forth. So it's just a matter of making sure you document that process, okay? And warrant items that will correct it, um, from prior, but overall, very positive financial, uh, report, getting to the end of the year in a very good financial position. Um, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, you're really only supporting next year's budget, about two hundred thousand dollars of appropriated reserves, which is very, very manageable for a district this size, so that's very positive. Um, and again, you've really managed some of your long-term obligations related to health insurance, you've done a good job there.
So we'll, um, we'll vote to accept this report a little later in the meeting, but we'll probably let Mr. Zuber get going, for the sticker off the whole meeting, so if you did have questions, kinda, we'll do our best to answer them now, you have some later, we'll figure it out, but, um, just wanna mention that before we let him go.
Yeah, so you have, you have questions, huh?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Alright, um, so that wraps up our audit committee, um, session, so if I get a motion to adjourn the audit, Chelsea, one second. Matt, thanks. All in favor, aye, and opposed, all in favor, motion carries, we are back in regular session then, thanks, everybody. Uh, let's see here, at this point, I think we're gonna move to our presentations, we've got building councils for all three buildings, uh, to share with us a little bit about their, their goal, their plans, so.
You ready?
Yeah, ready for you.
Super.
Maybe listen out, it's been a little while.
Just leave it up there so we can put the timer up there.
I was just gonna say, the bill's being, there is no need for a timer for me. No, we don't wanna share with anybody. And, um, glad you, there we go. I'm gonna jump a little out of order this year, typically, I have gone, uh, from academics into our pride, into our family engagement, finished up with building culture. Uh, purposely going a little bit out of order, I'll let you see, this is our group this year, uh, great group, some new people that have never served on our committee before, along with some returning people, which is always nice to have, a nice mix of people that have done this before and were not teaching along the way, but it's also nice to get new opinions and new approaches to things. I apologize, I did have somebody, I don't wanna point them out, that was gonna come tonight and join me, but they had something come up, so you're just stuck with me tonight, but that'll be fine. And I'm actually gonna skip past my first slide, the pride goal, actually, the second, I'm gonna go to building culture, because as I sat and thought about it, as I'm just sitting in the chair, our culture is something that we're always working on, I know that Chris is always talking about culture, but I will say that, at least for me, and I think for my staff, we've had an amazing start to our school year. Uh, I said it on opening day, I received a very nice award from the PTSA, and I said to, uh, on opening day, that, you know, it's my, Tim and I argue about this, whether it's my tenth or eleventh year, uh, I'm happier today and having a better year this year than I did ten years ago, or eleven years, that depends on who you're asking, and it really is a direct result of the culture of the building. So, I wanna talk a little bit about our culture, and, uh, this is not one of our official goals, but it is an initiative, um, we are gonna be continuing to do things, and it's sort of, we've tried to in the last few years make it more of a surprise for staff, so it's not just your typical events, uh, but I guess my big piece with this is, I would encourage you guys to join us. You guys did a great job of coming to some of those things, uh, I, we gave staff time because of the letters training last year, and we're trying not to take some of their time, so we gave time to them on opening days. But I know on the, at the October, uh, Superintendent's Conference Day, we are gonna do a team building activity, so if you have an interest in joining us, we had Chris and the admin team did that last year at Christmas time, we did Minute to Win It, those types of things, it's really sort of low stuff, nothing that you, you have to be super athletic or anything, but we do like to have fun. We're gonna continue to have breakfast throughout the school year, uh, and I had folks come, I remember Matt, and I forget, I apologize if you also came, I think Barb was there for breakfast one time. Uh, so if you can come to those types of events, it's great for the teachers to see you and interact with you as well, it does build a good culture. Um, I would tell this group, because nobody else is in here, but we have some, we have like the plans for a little snack cart of things that are like a pop-up sort of snack cart, out of the blue certain days for the staff, that we're gonna put out and do things. We had wellness challenges last year, they went over really well, we did step challenge, uh, I believe you lost in the final, uh, he lost in the final, so he did our step challenge.
Sounds like he doesn't go to the entire.
It is, it is surprising to see how competitive, I mean, we have staff members, yeah, two hundred thousand steps in a week. Like, they were putting in double workouts a day, getting up at five in the morning, getting on the treadmill, going home running at night, and it was all for fun, like, we were just doing it to be healthy. So we have more challenges planned for this year, uh, we talked about like a net zero November, December, so like, not trying to get people to lose weight over the holiday, but like, can we just walk back in on January one, weighing the same that we do on November one? but like, can we just walk back in on January one, weighing the same that we do on November one? We may have a prize for somebody if they can actually lose weight through those two months. Uh, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas can be tough with family events, so we have some things planned, so I would just, you're welcome to participate in any of those things if you want to. Uh, but just going back to the fact that I do really feel like the culture is good, it's changing, it's getting better, um, and I don't want that to feel like it's been bad, but it's continuing to improve. So, we're excited about that. So I'm gonna skip back to pride and family engagement, because we do have some other exciting things I think going on. So pride goal, uh, how are we recognizing kids for, uh, making great choices? Uh, this kickoff Friday, I talk to every grade level, so we do our pride talks in the cafeteria. That's really sort of me setting expectations with every grade level, uh, so the grade levels come to the cap. I have a slideshow about what it means to show pride, be respectful, responsible, safe in certain spaces. So we talk about cafeteria, we talk about bus, talk about the hallways and bathrooms, and we talk about the playground. Teachers take care of classrooms. This is really more about how do we recognize those kids that are doing those things on a regular basis? It ties to our character strong curriculum that we are still using, still teaching a half an hour lesson every single week that the kids get on, uh, character education, and we're gonna continue to have monthly celebrations. So if you get my newsletter, you will see the kids that are selected, our first month is October, the month, uh, the motto is respect, so we'll be looking for kids that are showing respect. Uh, we have turned some of it over on feedback from the teachers back to classrooms. We used to do it in more of a competition style, classes are gonna select their own student for showing respect. We will then, meeting me and some of the support staff and related service staff, will throw a party at the end of the month. Uh, that's a surprise for the kids, we do pizza, we do ice cream parties, we do try to make it healthy too, so we always try to throw in some extra recess for them, so not only do they get a little snack and a little treat, but they get to go do something fun. So, this is, uh, not a huge change, we do have some bigger changes than some of our other, uh, ones, some of our other goals. So family engagement, last few years I've gotten up and I've talked about three family events at night that we try to do every year. We changed it up, we went to the leadership academy, so all of the administrators go to FLC C in the summer, and a lot of what they were talking about and what I came taking out of that leadership academy this year was talking to kids about those soft skills, about what's gonna make them successful in a career later in life. Uh, so, being on time, getting your work done, giving your best effort, those types of things. And we had a conversation around that as building council, and so what we've decided to try this year is we are still gonna do one family night event, so Fall Festival, if you were at that before, that was the year I was dropping eggs, which we're still working on, off the roof, so kids could bring an egg and try to get it so it would survive falling off the roof. They wore their, uh, Halloween costumes, we had farm animals, they got to take pictures, paint pumpkins, do the whole Fall Festival thing. So we are gonna do that again on October twenty fourth. But the big change for us is we want to get the community to come to us. So, the end of last year, if you know Amy, and I always, if it's pure or pyra, I say it both ways, and Amy's very gracious, she's actually on our, uh, building council, did Ag Day last year at the end of the school year in the elementary school. And a bunch of our local farmers brought in animals and different things and allowed the kids to come out and see those and talk a little bit about what it is to do their job, to be a farmer in our community and what they provide. We took that and we said, that was a great event, we can build on that type of event, and we can start to talk to our students about, there is, you know, if you were to talk to a third grader, I could probably tell you the five or six things that they're gonna tell you they're going to be for the most part. They're all gonna be veterinarians, okay, they all wanna care for, but in general, we talked about that and, and what the kids don't understand is, yes, some kids are gonna, and we're not killing kids' dreams to go be a veterinarian, but there's a lot of other jobs in that office that are very important jobs that kids can go out and have. So what we're looking to do, and hopefully maybe with your support, is we're looking to have two days that are themed. So we thought about and are working towards talking to the towns and the county about bringing in equipment, because the kids are gonna need some sort of hook. So Ag Day was the animals, come in here and see them. If the town were to come and bring construction equipment, and if we were to have different businesses, your sweet blessings and other restaurants come in and be able to share and do some demonstrations. But really, the focus for us is having the kids then have a time with those people to hear about what jobs exist in their community and around here, and what skills do they need to have, and what are we teaching them as teachers today at an elementary school level to try to prepare them for those jobs? So, we're gonna try to have two, three events again, just two of them where the community, we're partnering with the community and the community is coming to us here. So, watch for those events, we're starting the Fall Festival because it's pretty soon, it's gonna be fall. So, and it's a little easier, and we've done that once before, so we have a plan. So, if you have any suggestions or thoughts about our other two events, we're open to any ideas for those two, so. Then we have probably, that was building culture, I jumped to it. This is one of our biggest changes, maybe the most exciting for me. So, it's been a carryover goal and it hasn't been that it's negative. We've had a goal focused on iReady for a number of years, and iReady is a great tool for us, it really is. Uh, the teachers on this building council really wanted to push that we were going to have an academic goal that they had some more ownership over. So, we went and began, and we've tried to do this, to be honest, the last few years, so this could be a little messy, but we're all very, the building is very excited about having this, and I'll show you an example of it. So, obviously, if you've been on the board or you've heard, we've done letters over the last few years, we've talked about the curriculums that we adopted, then we went to our assessment bins that we came and had presentations on and all the assessments that we were given, and then we also talked about letters training. So every year the kids at the elementary school have benchmarks, they're doing them right now, they'll do them again in January, and they do them, I can do them again in May and June. The teachers really wanted a way to set an individualized goal on one of those assessments. And their big push for that was, iReady is a great tool, but we send kids off to a computer to do that assessment, and they wanted to somehow integrate the assessments that they're physically given, that they have to sit one to one with a student and give themselves. So I'm gonna give you an example of our ELA and what it looks like. This is just dummy information, it's not a real class, but I'll show you what it looks like, so. If you were to look at a roster, it might look like this at the start of a school year. So at the top, or along the left, obviously, you have students. I'm gonna focus on the ELA section, so ORF is what would be called an oral reading fluency, which is how quickly, smoothly and accurately does a student read? You have a spelling screener that is tied to our letters assessment, so it, it's not just a spelling test, and I'm not gonna go into the nuances of it, because to be honest, unless you're giving it, it goes over my head some of these folks. Probably Barbara, who's been through training, could do a better, uh, job of explaining the spelling screener than I can, because she actually gives it. Uh, we have Maze, which is an actual comprehension assessment, so it's a way that we're measuring kids' comprehension. So the teachers were like, I wish we could give an assessment that we could pick from these assessments. And so what we've come up with, with the person that developed this program, whose name is Tracy Lindsay, is you'll see at the bottom an ELA goal, so if you remember, ORF, spelling screener, Maze, and I will include iReady is also an option. So if you go to an ELA goal this year, you have students, and is it gonna interact with me? Uh-oh. And see, I knew this is what was gonna happen to me, Nate. Okay. Well, I'll try to do it from here. Essentially, what, if, if you were, it's probably a rights piece, but if you look there where the measure goal is, it's actually supposed to have a little dropdown, so when you click on that dropdown arrow, those assessments, the ORF, the spelling screener, the maze, and iReady are an option. If you were to pick Maze for a student, for student number nine, the teachers don't even have to put in the score that was on this previous sheet. The score is automatically dragged from here in to here, and then the teacher is able to set an individualized goal for that student. So if the student had nineteen on the maze, this teacher's able to set the goal for twenty, as twenty-three correct responses on that same test. In January, their score will automatically be pulled in, and then again at June, and you'll see that since this student's goal was a twenty-three, when they only got a twenty-one in January, the goal is not met. When they hit twenty-three in June, or actually, I'm sorry, they, the June score was a twenty-eight, the goal is met. Does that make sense to you? I wish I could have it interact, because what we're really doing is being able to have teachers have control for an individual student. If you four are all students, they don't have to just pick one assessment. If they feel that Matt needs to improve on his oral reading fluency, that can be their focus for Matt, if that's where he is deficient. If Scott needs to get better with his comprehension, then they can set an individualized goal for the maze assessment. Does that make sense? I wish it would interact with us so that you could see it, I don't know why the rights are. Uh, but, again, going back to our presentation, our goal is for eighty percent of the students to meet their individualized goals set by teachers in ELA and in math this school year.
So Tim, is, so Jeff.
Yeah.
On the individual tests that they pick.
Yep.
Is that going to be what they're judging by the goal, or that individual is just an additional ancillary, uh, review of the student's abilities, okay?
Say it one more time.
The, the first slide.
Yep.
That you had.
Right here.
Everybody's using that first, those formulas consistently across all classes.
Grade levels, not every assessment, so kindergarten teachers' assessments look different. So like a kindergarten teacher is gonna be doing letter identification, letter sounds, while a first grade teacher or a second grade teacher, their assessments are individualized to the assessments that they give for those benchmarks three times a year.
Okay, so that, so when they pick that individual benchmark then.
Yep.
They pick that benchmark just that test or that criteria just once per?
Year.
Year.
Now, I will show you, I was gonna show you and I didn't wanna confuse you, because without it interacting. So the great thing is, if you see student number seven, so let's look at him or her. So iReady, level one, the, the goal was to get to level two, and the student reached level three in January. The way we had it built is that if a student reaches their goal in January, you can reset that goal if you want to increase that goal, because you still have half of the year, so why would you not increase that goal for the student moving forward?
Can you also decrease, or you can only increase?
I don't, could somebody go in and decrease? Yeah, I guess they could. Uh, again, I don't really have that concern, Matt, with our teachers, like, to be honest, to go in, like, they're excited about their ability to have more ownership out of choosing what each student is going to be working towards this year. Instead of necessarily iReady that sets just a standard, everybody should get twenty-four points, the kids are off on a computer, they're excited to be able to look at this test and say like, are we moving towards the goal that we've set for each student?
And, and I didn't mean to imply that.
Oh, that anybody would back it.
But you have to, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that Tracy's just being completely honest, I don't think he's worked it in here that somebody couldn't go change it. I mean, in Google you can see if people have changed, made changes, so we could go back and see if people are making changes, but I don't think it's gonna be an issue. So, the teachers were ecstatic about being able to do this. A, the ease of use, if, uh, the teacher that was gonna be here tonight, the, the best thing for them is, this is gonna take a teacher to set their goals ten, fifteen minutes maybe to physically go in. They're gonna spend more time mentally looking and thinking about what they wanna focus on, but super easy for them, uh, user easy, and they feel like they're gonna have more ownership over what they're doing day in and day out with kids.
Is there any consideration for a reward, I mean, it's great that the teachers wanna do this, is there any consideration for reward based on results at the end of the year?
Uh, not for me, but I will say that the upper grades are talking about having more conversations with kids and goal setting based on this and because of this directly with kids. Like, being able to show kids their scores and set goals and be able to have conversations with them about goals, which I think is beneficial. So, we'll see how this goes, uh, you know, this year, like I said, we're, it's as excited as I have been about an academic goal ever since I've been here. I, I honestly believe it's our best one, and I think it's gonna continue to push our teachers to focus, uh, and I won't go into it, but part of my goals with Chris last year were around our morning meetings, making them more data focused, and that's another portion of where this came from, uh, and how we're going to run our morning meetings and be looking at these goals individually. That's all there really is for it. Couldn't have been that long, right?
Nineteen forty-five.
Ah, come on. Not that long enough I could rewrite the PowerPoint.
Worship for tech.
Alright. Uh, this is a list of our committee members, uh, we're very fortunate to have two of us tonight, Beth North and Barb Diatola. Um, we added, we made a decision, we had students with us last year on our committee and we made a decision to add, um, to have new students each year to come on there, so we get a fresh perspective for that, and the same with the parents, so those are the parents that we had, had added. And then at this point, I would, uh, this is Beth North, and Barb, oh, I said that already, Barb, I'll have them take over the slides here.
One of the academic goals, once again, we want those eighty percent, um, increase, or eighty percent of the students to show their growth, and we're changing what we did as far as our evaluation, I know that we talked about iReady in the past. As you get to the middle school, it's computer-based, kids are tired of it, they're click, 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 you're really not getting the accuracy, and it's very long, especially those students that are at a higher level, because it takes them longer, and so it can be days of them taking this test. So, we decided to change that over, we're looking at a different, uh, universal screener. Um, we are going to be getting training on how we really evaluate those, that's, um, those results, which I think is gonna be great. So we're doing that same thing both for ELA and for math. Um, and the great part about this, which I'm excited about for both ELA and math, is it's going to save us about nine days in each of those subjects of actual instruction, because it did take so long to, um, do that testing. Um, we're gonna, we are now putting in deer time, which brings kids into study hall, and they're very calm, and then they can actually focus and get the work done afterwards, which is.
Is it, can, is that reading?
Yeah, it's drawing everything.
That's for babies.
So, and they're all bringing their own physical books, sitting down, and it's been dead silent in those study halls, which is unbelievable. We're gonna improve the function of the vertical team, we're gonna have that data, we're gonna have that training, so we're gonna be able to talk about those scores across, um, the curriculum.
And, um, state, the state testing scores as well.
Yes, yes.
State testing scores and state as well.
And we've changed our schedule a little bit, which has been amazing, because at two thirty, our kids are going home, so those kids that need that extra help, um, they're able to stay at two thirty, you get that one-on-one instruction. It can either be, I haven't done your homework, so you should be staying with me, let's, you don't have time to do it on your own, we're gonna give you some time. Or, it's you need some extra help, let's do this, and you can create some of those bonds that you really wanna have with kids. Um, they've also, we're using that EWI data chart that I think is what you were showing.
Yep.
And so it shows where his weaknesses are, what, what have been the assessments across the line, and that's been great, because it gives you a nice snapshot of each of the individual students.
Are you looking back at, um, their, let's say, incoming sixth graders that are new to you guys, are you looking back at their fifth grade, uh, information?
Yeah, it's, um, Friday is our first vertical team meeting, Brian's coming, and he's, he said he has three years with the data, so we put back, and.
And that's what we really want, because we wanna make sure that we can continue to move those kids forward, so it's great.
And we go back even beyond just last year, we go back the year before, because there's students who progress and then drop and progress and drop them, so really their progression is, it's like that two-step forward, one-step back mentality, and so we wanna see and kinda catch those kids too. it's like that two-step forward, one-step back mentality, and so we wanna see and kinda catch those kids too.
And that's also part of their emotional development as well, so.
Terry, Terry, not to interrupt you, can you just touch a little bit on the vertical team meeting, like what that is this year for the board, so they understand what that is?
Um, so, uh, grade six through eight in each of the cores, plus special ed, will get together and meet, and they will look at, um, different types of data, so the state testing data, it'll be data from the EWI chart, it'll be the STAR assessment, we tested the STAR assessment last year in ELA, and we're gonna add, uh, math and SEL. So, what we want them to do, and they ask for more direction, so we're, we're, Brian and I are gonna provide that, that we want them to really, um, look at, understand data analysis and what it is and how it works. Math is generally very good at that, but ELA, social studies asks for some help on that. So, um, we wanna teach them not to be afraid of the numbers and afraid of, of the data, but understand that it, um, it gives you clues, it gives you very good clues about what's going right and what's, what's going wrong. So, try to get in the habit of that, and, and in the habit of then, all right, now, how, how are we gonna make changes? And we're gonna analyze, the thing about assessments is we're always going about assessments, you're, you're looking at three things wherever you assess it. What did the student learn? How well did they learn? How well did I teach? And how, how good is our curriculum? So I want them to understand, we have to look at each one of those three areas with, with the, with the data that they get. And not just, a lot of teachers are nervous because they're just worried about, how did I do as, as a teacher? But we need to really have a broader look at that.
And if I can just pop in, this with social studies, obviously, a lot of that is reading and writing as well. So, a lot of that data is going to kind of coordinate into mind, um, social, social studies classes. So it's important for us to understand that, why is the student struggling in social studies? Maybe it's because they can't read it, how do we provide those supports?
And, so that's why we're doing our first one, we're doing all the course all together in the room with, with Brian, so that they can, um, everybody gets to see all of the data. And then they can, um, like if social studies wants to join ELA for a couple of days or meetings, they can do that, or join math, or whatever, they have that flexibility.
How, how much variance do you have on curriculum from, say, social studies going six, seven, and eight? Do you, can you timeline it in through, through the grade levels, or does the state designate, you're gonna be learning this at this level, this at that level, and you really don't?
Yeah, the state designates that, I'm doing ancient civilizations, and they move on to, you know, early colonial periods, and then they're going on into World War I, World War II in eighth grade. And then they come back in ninth grade to ancient civilization. So, it's, it's very different curriculum, but we wanna make sure that we're giving them the basics and the skills. Like, I'm big on geog- geography, that way they, by the time they get to eighth grade and they're doing World War I, World War II, they can actually know what the geography is, so.
So for our pride goals, we tried some new initiatives last year that we're gonna continue on. We are big on providing the supports that our students need and recognizing when they are making improvements. And so, we have done a lot of work with, um, what they call MTSS, which is multi-tiered, um, system of supports. So that looks at academic behavioral and social emotional needs, but strategies that classroom teachers can and other related service providers can implement for all students. So it's tiered kind of, um, things that work well for everyone, things that kinda work well for a certain group, and maybe individual or small group, um, supports. We want to continue the consistent pride language that we talked about last year, and that the elementary school, um, kind of really stresses with the, the littles, and as they come in and, and continue on into middle school, we wanna continue that language. Um, same idea with curriculum, you want consistent language throughout? Well, behavior expectations fall in that same line, we wanna all use the same language, which is beautifully decorated the wall behind you. Um, we added a sixth grade social emotional learning class. So that is a tummy class that every sixth grader is going to, um, take before they jump into health, which also has that component in seventh grade, they have it in sixth grade. And so it's talking, like, I know I talked to the teacher today, and they're talking about friendship, and how do you communicate with your friends? And how do you communicate with people that you want to be friends? Or maybe you have kind of a rough history with, because the, the kids in our district have been with their peers for a very long time, or they're new, and they're coming into, a group of kids that have been with their peers for a really long time. So there's that social demon, um, dynamic that we need to help foster and model for them. So that's a big component of the SEL class, um, as well as like soft skills that students need to be successful. There was been training last year and over the summer on adding, connecting our MTSS, our lists and our resources with our pride language and our pride initiatives. And that's kind of what we've been continuing to review, and we talk with the students a lot, of like, when you're doing a great job, or when you're being recognized for making improvements, what's rewarding for you? And we started with tangible, like, things, things they could purchase. Like, we have, um, I believe on the next slide, we have talked about some prides and rewards, and then we're, we're thinking, well, as they're ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds, what's cool for a twelve-year-old? So, we've talked about, can they earn enough pride bucks to buy where their locker is the next year? So that they can position it next to their friend? That one has been the coolest one, they want, they're like, you mean, I can buy where my locker is? So I can be, 'cause usually it's random or alphabetical. And so that's been really cool, so we're hyping that up, and we're always looking for new incentives, and we're always looking for new ways to recognize. And so we continue our ten-month motto, I kinda went out of order, but our ten-month motto is of, now we're recognizing up to four students per grade level per month for doing, um, exemplar things. And we put them in the, um, the bulletin boards around our, our center pit in the middle school. They're, they're ready, they're waiting, they're set for us, we just need some faces on there. And, um, we're also looking for ways to kind of really celebrate. And I have to tell a little story, um, of just, I can tell you that this is like, it worked really well last year. We, the monthly mottos was really great, because it was a great way for us to celebrate the kids that don't fall into the typical student of the month. So we had a student in sixth grade who really struggled, had a lot, lot of things going not in his favor. And we worked all year on building relationships and getting him here and getting him engaged, and a lot of hurdles. And we gave, we awarded him with the monthly motto winner in like June. And I got to see his face when it was announced on the, and I'm gonna tear up, but like, he was so excited. He's like, I never get an award, I mean, that, he, he's like that kid. And now I'm gonna tell you, a seventh grader, I know it's only the first week, he hasn't fallen asleep in class once, he's excited about being there, he's excited about learning, and he's saying, you know what? I can do this, I remember this. And so, I don't know if that's, I, I can't say that it's one leads to another, but I can't say that one doesn't lead to another. So, if we're looking for what went well, I'm gonna say that's probably it right there.
And I'm gonna put a plug in, we call it Fast Pass, I used to call it the Head of the Line Pass, so they get a certain amount of bucks, they can buy the Head of the Line Pass, and then they don't have to wait in line for the lunchroom, they can just get right up front. They're very highly motivated by food.
Yes, well, it was a big shame, they wanna buy all the food.
So family engagement, that's back to me. Um, we wanted to try and reach out more into the community and more to the parents. Um, having been a parent of a sixth grader when she was going into middle school, it always made me a little nervous. And one of the things that I really liked that we did this year was an evening where the parents all came in with the kids, they were all in the auditorium, um, Terry spoke with all of them, and then the kids all left, and they were ushered around the school with other students, and they really liked that, because here were your role models. And then you, Terry had an opportunity to step, step back and actually talk to the parents and say, these are the things that are expected, this is how it's going to work, and really talk to those parents. I know she stayed after it later on too, and she had a lot of one-on-one conversations with some of those, some of those parents, so that was great. Um, we had Locker Day, open house, obviously, always. Um, we're trying to reach out with surveys, we're trying not to do the overkill on surveys, because nobody really wants to answer fifty million surveys all the time. Um, we had some other school events, um, we did Family Matters last year with the elementary. I know that that was through, um, PTSA, that was great.
Yes, very gracious of us, you guys, you guys invited us to.
Career event, career event as well, we'd love to be able to, um, you know, piggyback with him on that as well. And like I had already talked about, that sixth grade orientation, which was really nice. It, it was very loud for the kids in the hall, my job was to stand up and say, gotta be quiet, she's talking to your parents.
And last year we tried that, uh, quarterly coffee, um, to try to engage the community, that didn't work, but then we, so, we were at one quarterly coffee, there was no parents there, so Beth came back to school, and it was packed with parents in the basketball tournament and all that, so we just, we shipped it, uh, last year, we're gonna keep it that, that we are gonna go to wherever the parents are, and engage them that way.
We went to the railroaders, um, opening day, so we had saw all the softball and all the baseballs. And so we were just kinda there, and it was very light, and the parents said hi, and we, we had kids coming up to us, so it was great to kind of support the athletes, but also, um, put faces to names and let the, this, the parents kinda meet some of us.
Um, so for the building culture, uh, I always feel it's very, it's, um, changing the climate of the building is easy, changing the culture, culture is a little bit more difficult, it's a more longer-term thing. So, we do wanna continue some of the things we did last year, like some of the rewards and incentives, not just for kids, but for, um, the parents as well. Uh, we're gonna continue with the get-to-know-you cards, all our shout-outs on, on the announcements and up on the bulletin board. Um, we're gonna allow the students to do shout-outs to each other, instead of just like adults to students. We'll let them write, uh, student-to-student shout-outs, uh, continue with surveys, like we said. The teacher area in the lobby has been really great for people, because if they get displaced, because there's a class in the room, they have a place to go. And we decorated that up a little as we did, uh, for the different seasons, and we'll continue to do that. Um, we have, uh, we did breakfasts, and we're, we're not gonna do that this year, we're gonna switch it to, um, snacks at, at the faculty meeting, and we'll rotate that around. And then we did lunches, which were very popular in, uh, like on cafes or, um, like professional development days. We invite people, we'll, we'll invite you, let you know when that is soon, because I, I like the just idea of like, you, you know, come to the professional development, then you might as well have lunch with us, and, and breakfast and, and all of that, so.
There's a lot of really good food for the pitching.
Oh, yeah, it's good, and then there's like candy salads, it's really good. What we're adding this year is, we're adding a team concept, uh, we started this at the faculty meeting. So, it helps the faculty take ownership of different parts of our culture development. So, we, um, we put a bunch of, you know, um, how should I say this, those big, those, uh, yeah.
Possibilities of different teams.
Yeah, and we charted that all up, and then we let them choose, didn't have to choose any, you can choose as many as you want to, to serve on. So it's nice to have them feeling like they have choice, they volunteer instead of us assigning, um, them to do that. So, our, uh, one team is celebration, so they're in charge of like, how do we wanna celebrate? Not just, um, the students and staff, but maybe some parents as well? What's the different ways that we can do that? Uh, team fun, which is, um, the team that is gonna, how do we, what are we gonna do for fun for the faculty? So they can get together and do some bonding, we've got bowling, darts, uh, some golf and things like that. Uh, summer school, um, neighboring summer, the neighboring districts have some summer schools that are really cool, project-based, they get a good draw. We didn't have a good draw for the middle school summer school this year, so that we now have a team that's gonna go look at that and try and, you know, come back with, how do we wanna do summer school, so we can pull some more, more students that'll make it fun? You know, not just like learning and it's, um, like recovery of some skills, but also do some like, um, enriching type of activities as well, pull some more kids in. Um, I usually do assemblies, and they're similar to how Jeff does his, you know, you talked about the different pride things that we want to build, the different character ed pieces that we would like to build with, with students. Um, the assembly team is gonna also try to look at, who can we bring in to sort of inspire our students and motivate our students in a different way on different topics? And then awards night, um, we have been doing it at night, but it often conflicts with games, so we, we miss about half the kids that way. So one of the things we're experimenting, we're taking a look at with that, um, that committee is, what if we had it at one o'clock in the afternoon? And we did a rock, paper, scissors contest at the end of the year. Um, and then we put the finalists in, and we had, we did it in the gym, and we had the whole school there. And it was like such a good experience, I think, for kids, they have their whole, the whole school cheering for them. It was a good experience for the kids in the stands doing the cheering, the faculty participated, it was, it was good. So I thought, what if we had the awards in front of the school? So the kids could be clapping for their, their classmates, they could also see, you know, this is what I can shoot for, and I can see my friend do it, so I know, maybe I could do it too, so hoping to look at, how can that motivate students to do that?
They, they used to do that about fifteen years ago, as, while we took measurements, principal.
Yeah.
It was very effective.
Yeah, really give it a shot, we, I put out a questionnaire to the parents, and so far, the overwhelming majority said, you know, we'll give it a shot at one o'clock, and we'll see, but we'll continue to survey and get some feedback from them. Um, let's see, clubs, we had a, a spot in our schedule last year for clubs, and that was in the two-thirty to three time slot. We don't have that anymore, but we have a team that's gonna look at what can we do with clubs. Um, our three D printing club was really great, there's an esports club in the high school that, um, Chris Hall wants to try to do with the, the middle school kids as well. There's Girls on the Run, which I'd like to see if somebody could take that as a club, um, for our kids. And then, we're gonna do a garage sale for the, so on a professional development day, everybody's gonna put a little desk outside, and all the materials they don't use, you can go out there, so that it just isn't sitting in a drawer or in a closet, and let's start getting, you know, these supplies out to people that, that will use them. Plus, you know, the shopping's always fun, so that's a good tip. And our, our staff of the month, this is surprisingly, I didn't know it would go over, but we do a staff of the month, and we're gonna, um, we had a cookie as a reward, but now it's gonna be, they can have, we're gonna have a reserved parking space for them, and they get the space. So we're gonna have a floor with them to go to wherever their space is, and they, that space is theirs.
People are very passionate about not having to move their space.
Yeah, so.
They didn't wanna set space, they want maybe just a sign in front of the space they always park in.
So, uh, you know, to summarize, a lot of the plan is like, continuing what we started last year, because I think it takes more than a year to get things to, to go, um, take hold, and then adding little tweaks and trying to keep things fresh as we go along this year. And that's it for us, high school.
Quick question, on your, uh, year program, do kids come in and read? Typically, are they reading hardcover books or reading readers or computer, how do they, what?
We all want computers, we want them to have a natural book in their hands.
Do they, is that their natural preference, is to go back to paper?
A lot of them are, a lot of them coming out of, um, now being like away from hyper learning, a lot of them are gravitating back towards wanting paper pencil, they're, it's more like a balance for sure. And I know part of the ELA, a lot of classroom teachers have their own like classroom libraries, and then part of ELA expectations is that they have an independent reading book. So we partner really well with, um, Mrs. Burns in the library, and the sixth graders go as part of their English class to kinda learn, um, well, what is, what options do I have in the library as a middle schooler? And they use their study hall time, and so it really is, um, paper books, hard, some hardcover, some softcover graphic novels, but tangible in their handbooks.
It's difficult to monitor, if you're, you know, one teacher and you have twenty kids there, what they're doing on the computer? Are they actually reading, or are they quick and open, going over to a YouTube thing? So this way, they, they have to have it in their hand, and then, you know, it was easy not to read when there's a computer. And then I think this is a little bit more inviting for them, it's like, well, I've gotta hear my, I'm gonna read it, and if this is interesting, I'm gonna read some more, that type of thing, you know, make it through that focus, like, let me try another one.
And it's been surprising, because even at the end of the time, you say, okay, now you can start your homework, the kids are like, uh, I'm not, I'm in a good part, I'm like, oh, I'm reading.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff, put in the platform.
You didn't bring anyone else along for a ride, so.
It doesn't, not at this point. So this year, when we met, we met three different times over the summertime, the way that our group, uh, the makeup of this group is a little bit different from years past. It's nice, because we have, so Julie Brown, she has been with Building Council now for the past three years, so it's nice. She brings in, uh, oh, she was here, Jeremy Stacey, like that fat friend piece to the table, uh, of the, the members of the committee. Very happy to have Stephanie Hudson, she is our parent rep. Plus also, we have three other teachers that are serving on Building Council. Um, Mitch Lollak is one of them, he said he did it years ago, and he's come back out, Jim Fano's another one, and Jen Knapp is another person as well. So we are now, and Courtney Briggs is our CSCA rep on Building Council. So we have a very good group of people, um, very good group of. So we have a very good group of people, um, very good group of diverse thinking, which is what we wanted to table. A group that, when we laid out the norms in the beginning of the year, and then we say, it's about, you know, we gotta agree to, we can agree to disagree, but at, at the end, it's always about, we leave this table, have a mutual understanding that we're all in this together, that one common goal. So when I say that one common goal, that when we look at things and we talk through things, I know Stephanie can really talk about this as well, that we would talk about different things like communication and our refer, and our disciplinary referrals and our RTI process, so on and so forth. But the reality was, is that we kept talking and I kept saying is that, if we can have this, this one primary goal, if we can have this one thing that can really improve all aspects of school for all of our students and all the people that come through these doors, what is that one thing? And that conversation, I mean, it took probably twelve, eighteen hours of really challenging each other, questioning each other, pushing each other, going through the data, talk about different research points, I mean, the conversations, I mean, it was never, ever heated. It was always very, like, team, where you had a group of off people all sitting around the table, coming from different lifestyles, having different perspective on things. But really, all of us having that one point, what can we do and what can we do together as a team to really narrow things down and help support all of our students, all of our staff? And it doesn't matter who comes through these doors, how can we reach every single person that's in this building? If you want to say that. So, the how and why are Building Council developing twenty twenty four goals? So the thing is, what's nice is, is that, you know, having Google Drive that you can, and infinite campus and EWI data, is that you can have with a push of a button, basically, any sort of data, any sort of answers that you want. And if we can't get to those, okay, that's where we all start to dig in as a team, we start to do that through our research, we're looking at things and start to question. Um, things can come up such as anything about, well, who, how many kids miss how many days? I mean, that's an easy piece for infinite campus, that we can get to. So we can get things that, then when it comes to behavior data, I mean, if you really wanna pinpoint, well, we have so many students like that are having trouble behavior, well, what are those trouble behaviors? What is insubordination, insubordination always is the number one behavior, like, well, how do you define insubordination? Questions guided into like, how do we define communication? And what do we do about communication? What are the communication pieces out there? And they get to learn how those different people communicate with each other, how they look for things for communication, same thing whenever it comes to, like, what are the patterns of behavior, what are the patterns of disciplinary referrals being learned? And it's quite amazing now with the systems that we have and through having Google and our rule of class rules and our Google Docs and through having infinite campus and all these different ways just to look through things, because we have a right there. In that we can talk to things and we have those answers with that click of a button. The same thing through the shared decision making process where, okay, if we have this, we pin it down with one goal, what is gonna be that goal? And what, how we all gonna agree and how we all gonna move together? Can we break off some committees, what is gonna be your role, what is gonna be your role? How are we gonna take this out collectively as a team, where we just all put it on one single person, we do it all together? And the last thing too is, and I'm a big believer, and I'm a big believer in action, action research, but when it comes down also, I've learned action planning. Is that when you look through the problems, that you write your goal, but then, and I'll talk to this in a couple more slides, but it's really more of that split goals. Where you, you have your goal, after you look through your problems, and then you write it out, and then who's gonna be responsible? And then you implement that, then you assess that, if it's working, if it's not working, but you gotta modify and adjust, and then circle back to. So, the first day after I saw, I love these icebreaker activities that Chris always does with us as a leadership team. I always do these with the team as well, whenever we get together. So I completed that, I had the fortune, I was fortunate enough, um, in my career, I got to learn under a man named Bradley Geis. And Bradley Geis was, so you see Victoria Barnhart, she is the main author of this book, but Bradley Geis is one of the other co-authors of this book. And the one thing that he taught me and that I got to learn from him is, was this idea of twenty projects and also the action planning piece that goes along with it. So when you go through the action plan, you've gotta develop your problems, like what we think are our biggest problems within our building. And when we, the staff, the people along with the table for Building Council, what they did was, like, so we need to write down what you think are the biggest twenty problems. And you see after six and seven or eight, that's when it starts to become tough. And that's what we wanna get to, because nine through twenty is that, that's that deeper feeling. That is really going above and beyond, just, okay, one through six, it's easy, well, it's this and sad, it's this. But then when you get to those larger numbers, that's when you gotta really dig in, you gotta really think, okay, well, what about this? What about this possible problem? And then what we do is then we share it out, each person, and that's when we start to say, okay, what are the commonalities? What are the themes that we're constantly having? And then we start to have our conversations around that, and that's when we start to bring up our data points to develop our SMARTboard. And I'm a big believer when it comes to SMARTboards, is because just knowing that it's tangible, just to make sure that we have a timeframe that we know we're gonna reach at the end. But the big thing too is, and I kept seeing this over and over again, what is relevant to us? Like, what is the big piece that represents who we are as a culture, as Red Jet? So we need to follow this, is that it's gotta be something to number one, that hundred percent, I know we all say through all our careers, and a hundred percent of people to obtain this goal, but the reality is, when we talk about our students, when we talk about our staff, that it's just not gonna be feasible, it's just not realistic. So what is a percentage, what is a number that we can quantify and make sure that it is gonna be obtainable at the end, when we set our time frame? So this is the process that we're always gonna be going through, and this is a process that we've been going through since the beginning, since I left here for year three. Is that we do start off with our SMARTboard and then we start to develop our tasks and I started to go through. The one thing that this doesn't show you is that I couldn't find one that has narrowed, that goes from monitoring process, but then it should be modifying, adjusting, if we're not reaching that goal. So if we're not reaching that goal, what do we need to change, what's the reason why, and what do we need to do? And then we start back with this whole process all over again. So here's our goal. And our goal, as simple as this sounds, as simple as this is, we have a lot of amazing deep conversations just to reach this goal. And really to look at it, it's about getting eighty-five percent of our population, and this is all of the adults in the building, and this is all of the students in the building, having eighty-five percent of them taking part in an extracurricular activity. And we say that, we're talking band, we're talking chorus, we're talking theater, we're talking all of our athletics, we're talking all of our clubs. So all these different amazing things that we offer here at Red Jet, things that I know that we talk about in it, going on, it's very important that we have something for everyone.
Do you have any idea how many are doing that currently, or, I know you're just starting out with this new goal, but.
So, you know, Matt, that's a good question, that's a great question actually, because.
We do have some baseline data.
So we do have that data. And that's what's very special about here, is that, and I don't wanna skip ahead, but I'm gonna go ahead and skip ahead and I'll come back to it, is that we were able to, as a team, with all the people that are sitting around that table for Building Council, we can go through every single student, student by student, teacher by teacher, support staff by support staff. And we could tell you who does what, someone around that table knew their story, knew what they do, knew what they're involved in. And the reality is, without you pulling them in yet to get that understanding of the possibilities of what can engage them and what offerings might you might like, or so on and so forth, we already knew who does what and what they're already involved in, who leads what, and what they're being, what they, what are they passionate about. So that is like one of the special things about here, and I'll say it over and over again, is that we know each other.
So you, you pull in like scouts as.
We do not, so things that we offer here within Red Jet, so scouts, so we started to have those conversations. Well, and that's why we went to the eighty-five percent, is because of, you know, we have kids that work a job, that are in scouts, that they also have to take care of a sibling, so how can they then make time for one of these clubs or one of these other extracurricular activities that take place? And those are conversations of too, that, well, if we do have time, like, how can we make it more conducive for you? Because that one kid isn't the only kid in that situation. So we do have kids, and also adults too. So we have people involved in things outside of the school, in our community, and also local communities, which involves other students or kids. But not particularly involved here. And if you look at this, so twenty-one percent, so forty-seven out of two hundred and thirty-one students and twenty-nine percent, twelve out of forty-two staff members are not involved in an extracurricular activity here at Red Jet High School. But if you look at those numbers, to really quantify this, is that we do increase participation, so we take out of that forty-seven, if twelve more students, we can carry, we can get twelve more students and five more staff members to take part in an extracurricular, then we meet our goal of eighty-five percent. So why is it important? Well, homeschool, whole community, whole town, I think they all definitely tie in together. But the other thing too is, is if we can increase this, then we all know, and this is all research based, and when I plug this in and I ask this question right to Google, there are so many documents, so many journals that came out, that backs this up. And this is from the University of Wisconsin, is that what it does is, if you take part in something within our school, then you're more likely to have a sense of belonging, motivation, academic achievement, self-confidence, self-esteem, positive behaviors, hence disciplinary referrals are a significant part. So attendance goes up, behaviors go down, engagement increases, academic system gets better, it's just an overall increase of everything that we have in the building. So these are our strategies and some of our action steps. Now, one thing too is that, when it comes to building council plans, which I also look at as our way to improve our overall school, these are living documents, that these things, and I go back to that action planning, monitor and adjust, talk about, that we're always, never going to set this stuff in stone, we're always changing things up, we're increasing things, we take away things, we put things in a place, we need to be put in a place, but we're always circling back together. And so these are some of the lists of things that we already, that we wanted to put into place, and as you'll see, we already started to put in place. So we already have identified who the students are, we've already identified who the staff is. But also, what we've done is, we've already had a full day orientation. And our full day orientation is where we talk about the clubs, we've talked about different academic pieces, we've talked about different courses that we offer. We went through all these different things together as a whole building and this was a shared responsibility amongst all of the staff here. Another piece that was brand new, newly implemented this year is a mini homeroom, that we asked all of our teachers to have a first period classes for the first five minutes. Is that Jen Mack creates this slide and she goes over this slide with the students, and it's just a good way just to check in with the students, but also to share and to communicate and to get things out, that know what we're doing. And I had to share this one, because it brought a smile on my face, because I see that tomorrow, and this was supposed to probably be a surprise to me, but it's supposed to be, get Mr. George a fist bump. I don't know if you know, I guess I'm obsessed with fist bumps, but that's what the kids are supposed to do tomorrow. This is a way for staff to come together, increase collaboration, conversation and engagement within that, with this staff. Every first Friday, yes, it's not our first Friday, but this is, has been becoming a standing ritual that we have here within our building. And it's just a way to bring people together, which also opens up those conversations, and that's how you get to learn about different interests and different things that people like to do. And then the other one too is, all of our club advisors are filled. This is my third year, and my third year, this is the first time we've actually gotten newspaper roles. We brought back unified sports. So we have all of our clubs all filled, we have amazing advisors that do a great job recruiting kids, and we're also helping get the word out there.
I just wanna thank you guys all for taking a few minutes to listen to my positive experience as being the parent on the High School Building Council. Um, when I first joined, I was super excited to be a part of a team with dedicated educators, staff and administrators to help shape our students' futures. Um, from the beginning, it was evident that we were looking for more than just a vision, but like a mission that was rooted in the culture of our community. Um, and because we believe in the positive inclusive school culture, the foundation which all of the success is built, we also believe that this isn't just a strong buzzword, we believe that this is a place where students will feel safe and respected and motivated to learn. When students know they are part of the community that cares, they are more likely to be engaged, to put forth their best effort and to grow academically, socially and emotionally. Our goal is actually starting to field some great results, uh, homecoming is right around the corner. We know that this is gonna start showing more, um, community relations, it's gonna start building respect with the students and the respect the students give to our staff. As well as build empathy between our students. We know that, um, later on, the academic portion will follow, because when a student feels more engaged in their community, they're more likely to show up and be prepared every single day. Um, this journey has really reaffirmed our belief as a group and as a team, um, about a supportive environment within the school district. And we believe that this really does lay the groundwork for all successes in the building. Um, we're deeply grateful to be part of this community, as well as to make the strides, to make the difference for our students. We are building more than just a school, we are building a community, a community that every student has the opportunity to thrive. Um, I'm excited about the progress that we're looking to see, but I'm more, um, excited about what lies ahead of us. Um, together as a unified team of educators, staff, students and parents, we can continue to foster a culture of compassion and growth for students and faculty.
Any questions?
I'm forward to hearing from about it. Thank you. All right, well, great job to all, and thank you so much. All right. That takes us to personnel, so as has become customary, we're gonna vote on the personnel report, um, by consent. And so I'll just ask, I encourage you to see if anyone has any questions or concerns or wants to talk to you out of the consent process. Okay, very good. Um, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the consent agenda items as presented. Motion, Jen, any second from Scott, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, very good. And you probably noticed there are some retirements in there, one of our goals is to recognize those retirements. Um, we've had a discussion about that and, uh, there was a lot going on in this meeting, and those retirements are really in advance of, you know, things that take place at the end of the year. So we are gonna find a time to specifically recognize those folks, just wanna mention that. All right, thanks. Uh, okay, so CSC and CPSC. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the CSC and CPSC recommendation as presented. Motion from Chelsea, thank you very much, is there a second from Scott? Thank you. Um, do we have any questions on CSC and CPSC reports? Very good, all right, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries.
I have to make one comment, how's it going with your daughter?
Oh my gosh, so great, the kids love to, it's been such a pleasure, I'm just, she's like the celebrity, I swear. It's amazing and it's been really fun, I've been in the UK, I've had some joint presentations, but it's just, last year was a lot in my office and now it's just allowed a lot of mine to really pass me through.
That's great, Buster, right?
Yeah.
Buster, all right. All right, uh, moving on to reports and correspondence, uh, any questions on the claims? Uh, any questions on the claims audit? Anything's up? Good. If none, then we'll move on. And somebody turn it over to Superintendent Bernard for his report.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you to our building principals and their guests for, uh, their building, uh, reports and presentations. Um, I hope folks can start to see that there's, uh, obviously differentiation at each building. Um, it's individualized, but a lot of similarities around what our buildings are working on to help tie them in forward. Um, so I'm pleased to report that we got an incredible start to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Um, first and foremost, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to our staff, our leadership team, um, who worked tirelessly over the summer, in the closing months of summer, to ensure our facilities are ready, to make sure our staff are ready, to welcome back students. Their commitment truly made this opening smooth and seamless. Um, and I know it was only our second year together as we're doing it, but it seemed like it was year seven or eight in the way that it operated. I have to give a special thank you to, uh, Jeff's facilities, um, our cleaners, our custodial team. Unless you've been in a school from July, basically, July fourth, after July fourth to the third week in August, you don't realize the miracle that they make. They, they break down an entire building, including our J E C, which doesn't completely empty out their building until about two weeks before the end of the summer. And then they completely rebuild the building when it comes to floors, walls. I mean, you see people climbing on things to clean places that you didn't even know existed. So, um, kudos to that group and that summer group that comes in. We have student volunteers that come in, um, and we are incredibly fortunate. If you walk around and you see like our floors are shiny, our walls look great, our exterior looks fantastic, our grass is the way it should be, and it's all kudos to that group and the work that Jeff has done with them. So, thank you to that group. Um, just to recap for everybody, kind of the last week of the summer and going into the school year, on August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, um, Dr. Weller and the rest of the leadership team hosted a new teacher orientation. We had five brand new staff, and we had two staff members who started last year who we brought back to do orientation with us. It was a fantastic opportunity for our new staff members to integrate with our leadership team, our district, and connect with their colleagues. The energy enthusiasm that the leadership team, as well as the new staff, bring was truly inspiring. And I'm confident that with the support of the administrative team and the, the foundation that was laid that day, they will strive in this supportive environment. Moving forward to August twenty-ninth, which was our faculty conference day, uh, that was another highlight. It was a day filled with collaboration, planning, and preparation. And as Jeff talked about in his presentation, we, we really tried to balance that with giving our staff time to prepare in those days. And we got really good feedback from them in regards to that. Um, I'm continuously amazed, even though I've opened schools for years, um, by the dedication our educators show in ensuring everything is ready for our students, from the details on their front doors to the details that you see in the reading baskets in the elementary classrooms. Um, then we moved to our September third, which marked the official start of the year with our entire staff coming together, which was a request that was made of me, was to let's open with everybody together. So we had our auditorium full, our entire staff, and we focused on two things that morning. Celebration and gratitude to kick off our year. Uh, one of the most memorable parts for me was after that, we all went out onto the field and took a great new picture, if you look at our website, with a drone that captures our entire staff standing over the Cardinals logo on the football field. I want to give a special thank you to our board members who attended that morning and to President Simmons who helped kick us off that day. So thank you to everybody who made that day very special. Finally, September fourth and fifth were our opening days for students. September fourth was our day that we started with our one through twelve students. And then the fifth was when we brought in our youngest learners in U P K and in kindergarten. The excitement, energy, and enthusiasm was palpable throughout our district. I know, for me, walking the halls, visiting classrooms, I could feel the positive momentum that we built as a district from last year carrying into this year. And I want to thank everyone for their efforts in making this a fantastic start. I urge us all, as we move forward, to continue to do the three things that we've talked about since I came on board. Listen to each other, learn from each other, and connect with each other, our students and our families. And let's keep building on this strong foundation throughout this year. Um, I do want to point out another thing to the board and to the rest of the community. Um, and this is another example of our facility, facilities team spinning on a dime. Um, we got feedback last spring about how do we capture our history better? How do we get better about sharing who we are and maintaining the pride of who we are as we move forward into the new, into future years? So if you look, we've tried to create a showcase, in the front showcase, across from the middle school, high school cafeteria. It's still a work in progress, but you'll see we have new, two new screens in there. One of them is dedicated to all members of our community, uh, and alumni who have served in our armed forces, that that scrolls through and shows them. Chris Kasabekis continues to be getting feedback and updating that. In between that, we're going to be putting together what we're going to call like our historical museum. That's going to highlight what the history of Manchester, Shortsville is through different items. Um, I know Chris is working with a couple of our local historians to get items to put in that case that will highlight the, the two villages, but also the combination of that when we come together to make our school district. That second screen is a scroll through of our current Hall of Fame. Um, we still have the Hall of Fame information back, but this is another nice way to honor those folks there. Um, the goal will be to maintain that and build upon it as we move forward. And again, that came from feedback from a student board member, um, in the spring on how we, how can we better teach and, um, share our, our pride and our history? So I just want to point that out, if you come into the district, that's still in the process of being created, but it's in a good place. Um, lastly, I'd like to use this opportunity to just point out some dates that are coming up for us. Um, as was pointed out, um, next week is the kickoff of our spirit week, so that kicks off on Monday. Homecoming weekend, we'll do that end of that next week. Um, the week of nine twenty-six, we have some big events. We have picture day for our elementary students, we have a board work session. Um, the twenty-seventh, we also have middle school, high school pictures for folks that are preparing for those days. Um, and then on the twenty-eighth, the district is hosting here on our front yard, the P T S A Fall Craft Fair, so just remind both folks. Um, October tenth is a big day for us as a district because we're doing a full open house, where middle school, high school open house will be at five thirty P M. Elementary open house will be at six thirty P M on that same evening. Um, October eleventh, for my folks, is a P V day, no school for students. Um, we're looking forward to doing some great P V with our staff and also blending in some of that team building. October fourteenth is the holiday, there's no school, and October seventeenth will be back here for our October board meeting.
And I guess I, I just wanted to say really quick, I, I know that, I'll speak for myself, I, I really enjoy having opportunities. And we, we have this typical work we do as board members, but opportunities to be in the building, to interact with folks, to just be part of the day-to-day, you know, when it works for you all and when we can also make it work, um, in between our day jobs and things like that. Um, it, to me, there's, you know, nothing really better than that. So I know every board member has taken those opportunities at one point or another. So just want to say thank you for that and, and keep it coming. It doesn't, you know, fortunately, it's like, uh, sometimes we can make it, sometimes we can't. Usually our goal, we have some goals ourselves as well, we're actually going to share those at the next meeting. And one of those, um, you know, I, that we're just going to continue with is, you know, a whole great show. We're represented, and we're showing up at, um, opportunities like what you guys have mentioned, what Chris described, so appreciate that. All right. With that, I guess, what do we have in, by the way, a committee update? There's not much this month, right? Do you guys?
No. Yeah, we have the, our first, Tim and I have our first O A C M meeting, uh, and Jeff, sorry, with, uh, next week. And then I'll provide a great, uh, greater update, which is that is the time that hopefully we're going to get some more specifics on the costs of the list that the committee has put out in compared to what our budget is. So we should have a greater update, I should have it for that team, um, in that, hopefully before the October board meeting.
So, great. So that's capital project, and then you've got some work to spin it up right around the branding committee.
Yeah, so their next meeting will, uh, be October third. Um, that will be the next branding committee meeting. Uh, and the goal behind that will be looking at, um, four, I think, Chelsea, it was like four different, um, graphic design groups. Four of the graphic design groups that, uh, Chris Kasabekis is going to bring forward to start working on logo. How we get feedback from staff and families and students and alumni around logo creation of the actual mascot, not the whole logo. So, again, October seventeenth being they should have an update, maybe even a recommendation of who we're working for with the graphic designers.
Any questions or other updates with respect to the meeting? Awesome, thank you. That moves us to financial reports. So at this point, we'll go ahead and, um, um, act on the external audit that we heard about earlier in the meeting. So, um, Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the external audit report and corrective action plan for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. We have a motion from Scott, thank you. And a second? Wait.
You, you looked at Matt, Matt made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was Matt. So we had a motion from, from Matt, and a second from Scott. All right, sorry guys, thank you. Um, all right, any, I assume you don't, uh, have, uh, Tom, who's, you know, any other thoughts on any of that?
Thanks, Scott, Tim.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive report, uh, on all fronts really, from a process standpoint and from a financial standpoint, so, thank you. Great job. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Very good. All right, and additionally, under the financials, we've got a, a contract, uh, warrant of a contract for abatement work as part of the spend-down from the prior capital project. You all should have details when you're pregnant. Um, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the abatement contract to Environmental Construction Group. I have a motion from Chelsea. And a second. Um, Jen, thanks. All right. Uh, any questions on this?
I have a question, but I'm hoping we better ask, or to S E I and the cap project as far as, do we, do we always sign an abatement contract? Or do we actually confirm that there is asbestos that we need to pay? Or is it just standard practice now?
Yeah, we know of it, we, we do it in six months. Now Jeff does the walkthrough. We know areas in the, that had abatement, so we have targeted getting certain classrooms in certain areas down. Yep. And while I'm also talking, we also opened, did not open gym forbids that day because we did not receive any. So we are looking at, we might have an alternative for that.
Being the gym, the main gym.
The removal of.
Fair question. Cool, all right. Um, with respect to the abatement contract, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, new business, we have, um, on the agenda, uh, to review policy seven one three two, which is non-resident students, which is essentially a tuition, a policy that allows, um, an out-of-district student to apply to, to attend school at Red Jacket, and it outlines who can apply, how they do it, et cetera. And so, um, I just want to open up, but at this point, I guess I should know, we're going to do, we're doing a conference review of lots of our policies. This was a one-off by request, and the goal here is just to have some discussion about, are, you know, are there questions about the policy? Are there concerns, are there things we want to dig deeper into for potential changes? Um, that's really the purpose of this agenda item, so I'll open the floor.
Um, I'll, I'll start is, um, because I live such a sheltered life and I saw this policy, I've, the things that ran through my mind is, uh, you know, kids not playing football in one district, so you want to transfer them here so they can be on the team here. And, you know, that type of scenario for, uh, transferring in or out. And then I recently became aware of another scenario, which never would have occurred to me. Where it goes, uh, to me, it's like, it's beyond the education, it's more of a safety issue and development issue. And I think, because of that, I think out of number three on page one, uh, where it's referenced, refers to the student's enrollment will not require the hiring of additional staff. I think we should delete that. I think no matter what the costs are to educate a child, it should be absorbed. I don't think we should turn someone away because of a dollar. So that's my proposal is to eliminate I N O number three.
Do you think we need to dig into what potential implications of that could be? I mean, I, I don't know the answer as to what that would.
It could be really bad. I mean, it could be really bad, but if, um, we are a public school, we're not a private school, and our job is to educate kids, and we shouldn't be turning away somebody because of the cost of that particular kid. If we were to do that, then there would be no kids with special education needs coming to Red Jacket or burning up. It just, it just doesn't sit right with me that, um, a dollar value is placed on a child. And there's, there's scenarios where, um, you know, it's, we're, we're already, it is already tough for some people, say if a, hypothetically, a student in Palmaro was sexually assaulted, and they want to transfer to get away from that environment because they just couldn't emotionally detach themselves from the kids that they'll see every single day in that building. We're already asking them to pay a tuition to do that, pay additional costs to do that. So I, I think that's enough of a sacrifice, enough of a ask on that family. And, uh, with a twenty-some million dollar budget, regardless of who that kid is, I think everybody in this community would say, you know what, no, it's, it's more important that that kid feels safe and we embrace them as quickly as possible, and they can develop to be, uh, normal adults without that baggage hanging over them. So that's, that is my opinion of that.
I, um, I think instead of deleting it, perhaps all numbered paragraphs should, the, um, language should be changed, um, to be a little bit more, the preceding paragraph indicates that the non-resident student may be admitted based on the following considerations. And instead of the way I agree, number three reads is, that's kind of the student's enrollment would require hiring additional staff. It sounds like we'd say no. Instead, we could say whether the enrollment would require the hiring of additional staff. So then it would be dependent, we would, the building principal, I guess, would be able to look at the reasons why the additional staff would need to be hired, and if it would be appropriate for our district. Instead of the way it reads now, kind of like, well, if it requires the hiring, we're not going to do it. Instead of, maybe we should consider it as a factor.
I mean, I, um, I see your point, but I think if you do something subjective then, then you put your, you put yourself in school, puts itself in the position of you allowed this student in, you didn't allow this student in. So I think it's, uh, I think that adding in the, yeah, adding is something that could be subjective. Um, could create a problem in that aspect.
We do have some layers, right? And where they, the determination is made, that can be appealed, and there's a couple of levels of that.
Yeah, and I, I feel really good about the other, you know, the first two items where basically you're looking at a kid's behavior and if he's going to be disruptive in the school, you know, he's not coming here because he got thrown out of every other school district and we're the last one. We're, we're already reviewing his behavior and his history. Number three has to do with, with us being able to provide, not with them being able to learn.
Okay. What are the thoughts?
Well, the worst case scenario is, it would just basically, when you say Karen, this is, it would be applying to kids with special needs. Because really, that's the only place that we would hire additional staff, a one-on-one, a, a, you know, wh- whatever.
I, I think that's a very possible scenario where that would happen.
So I, you know.
And I don't know the possibility versus the possibility of second, but.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
Yes.
I can't disagree with that.
The application.
I was trying to tell you, but I can't disagree with that.
I mean, we're looking at applications of kids with I E Ps, so we will accept kids with special needs. This is what it says, if a kid applies here, or a family applies to come here. And by law, if their I P says they need a, we will provide that. So I'm not even sure why that is in there, and it actually to be asked.
I, I don't think it should be.
I mean, if we.
What, sorry, Barbara, can you be specific about? Sorry, Barb, can you be specific about what?
Well, I'm looking, it says the application will consist of the student's registration form, medical records, transcripts, and any individualized educational program. So we, it looks to me like we allow applications in with IEPs, kids with special needs. Correct? Am I, am I, am I reading this right?
No, you could, but it doesn't, an IP doesn't mean you need to have an.
No, it doesn't. Well, let's say, you know, scenario is if the kid needs a one-on-one, or he needs to be in a classroom with two aides or whatever, I mean, we would provide that. We would provide that for our own students. So I'm not sure why that, number three, I mean, it doesn't make sense why it's in there.
Do you think it'd be helpful to look at other school districts to see what they have as well? Yeah, I just wouldn't want then, our school district to be the school district that everybody goes to because they'll, will hire eighteen people if that's what it requires. And I'm not saying that, but I think it would be helpful to also look, to make sure we don't become.
That could definitely be, I mean, that scenario is a possibility, but, and that's just my own opinion. To me, I don't care what other school districts do, because I see this as a right and a wrong thing, and I think that's wrong. But I, I can see, yeah, you could be, in theory, you could be a magnet. I mean, if we didn't have that one and two in there, we could have gotten every single worst-case kid in, in a state relocating.
But we have the option to decline. You do not have to take these students. So they can submit an application, and you can decline to take them, based on some behavior, for example, you know, safety, that kind of thing. I only see this applying to kids with special needs, additional staff, because you're not gonna put additional staff on a regular kid.
A quick comment, I guess, from myself, and I wanna maybe talk about, what's next, right? What do we do next? Man, I would just say, I appreciate the sentiment. I don't personally agree that it's as simple as just writing on, like, the ability to decline somebody for myriad reasons, I think, is something a district has to have to protect itself.
But we don't have that in there. We're saying the only reason we would decline them is if we had to hire additional staff.
Well, there's a number of considerations, but, but yeah.
Well, that's the only one saying we move.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, I guess, I don't like being put in a position where it would be suggested that we don't accept everybody based on that condition, that we're somehow either right or wrong. I just think it's more nuanced, and so I think we need to appreciate that. It's okay, it was a good conversation, though. What?
I make a motion to remove item number three from the policy.
You're moving to?
Is this just the first reading of this?
Yeah, it's not even, there's no policy change being proposed necessarily, although Matt wants to propose one. I advise against it because we need to make sure we're being diligent and deliberate with what we do, because it will have facts.
I'd say you would bring it back for a second reading and talk about it. Maybe do a little bit of research on it, if that's possible, or maybe even with this, any of this from the policy committee? Like, we get a lot of policies that we can't change, they're the, they come from the state, we can't change the language. So is any of this?
There's regular legal implications to how we, how we craft the language as well. So that's a question I have, legal implications. So let's see the list of questions. Can you do that? Legal implications, I heard questions about what other districts do. What other questions do we have that we could potentially make a change or not make a change with this policy? All right, you think of any? Send me more. Give yourself a bit of Chris, okay? Thank you. All right.
I did. I can't figure out what you're, I looked at it a million times. Can you help me? Tim and I were talking.
I had to keep reading it, and maybe it's.
Which section? Because if we're looking at language, I wanna make sure that we're looking at that, too. Which section are you?
So, tuition guidelines for non-resident students.
Where is it?
Tuition guidelines?
Okay.
For non-resident students, tuition. Oh, the board reserves the right to revert a tuition charge at any time if a family, non-resident, if a family is a non-resident family, but pays taxes to the Manchester, Shortsville School District, their district taxes from the appropriate tuition rate established by the board, period. Doesn't work.
Well, so if I.
I have the intention, it's probably if you pay that, it's about the tuition, I don't know. It doesn't say that. It just, there's no action for it.
It says, hold on, I don't know that it read, when I read this, it says.
Their district taxes, the appropriate tuition rate established by the board. What does that statement mean?
But it says their tuition charges will be reduced by subtracting the total amount paid.
It does.
Where's the word reduced?
Yeah, I don't know if you're seeing.
The word reduced is not in there.
Under tuition guidelines of non-resident students?
For a paragraph?
Scott, are you on the one with the highlights? Because I'm on the one that's on the website, and I agree with Scott. This one, the one.
I did not read, I'm on the website. Maybe it was fixed in the past.
It was. Even when we're talking, like, you guys are talking numbers, there are actually As on ABC on the website. We need, I need to compare these two before.
So this is how, Scott, this is how this one reads. Well, this, this one reads, if a family is a non-resident family, but pays taxes to the Manchester, Shortsville Central School District, their tuition charges will be reduced by subtracting the total amount paid to Manchester, Shortsville School. District taxes from the appropriate tuition rate established by the board.
That's exactly right.
Okay. So we have to cross-reference the two to make sure that it's.
About the two thousand nineteen version?
This all say two thousand nineteen.
This is the two thousand nineteen one.
So the one policy service has, hasn't that from up?
Yeah, very good.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, very good. Is this, Tim, is this correct for our executive session? We're gonna be going to the executive session. All right. So at this point, thank you very much, by the way, everyone, for sticking with us. I, there was a ton of great information tonight, and by the way, thank you for your presentations. Excellent to hear what's going on in the buildings. Thank you so much. At this point, the board is gonna move into executive session.